Oh, yeah. Sure.
I know that right. All right. Touch.
Are we getting into it?
Yeah, apparently. Oh, now she's pushing.
No, no, no.
Maybe. We can't see more than we can.
We can't.
Guys, she'll see all the.
But thank you, Mandy.
Come on over.
All the little meaty corn lats. All the closer. All right. One, two, three. I'll do like one more as there's leaking.
Say dots. Dots. Oh, that's so cute. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the Auburn School Committee meeting, September 21st, 2022. This meeting of the Town of Auburn School Committee is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, and extended through March 31st, 2023. Okay, thank you. The governor's order, along with all supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body, is available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. I'm trying. Accordingly, all members of this meeting who participate, please be aware that the public may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Thank you. And stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We have a lot of faces, little faces in the crowd tonight. It's very exciting. Thank you for being here. We're going to do something a little bit new. Dr. Chamberlain and I had talked about incorporating our district vision and commitment. So at the start of each meeting, I'm going to have my co-chair read those aloud and just to keep our focus on what is most important. So take away, Meg.
Our vision, the vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for opportunities and challenges of a changing world. And our commitment will create, we will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools without regard to race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
All right. Thank you. And we don't have citizens' comments because we cannot connect, right?
Right.
So, okay, we'll move on from that. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes from 9/7/22?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting on September 7th, 2022.
Second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. It is a vote. Yep. And special recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have two this evening. Ms. Holloway notified us that we had two former Auburn teachers pass away recently. Mary Nowasaki was a teacher in Auburn High School, the seventh grade in the Auburn Schools for 34 years. She loved to teach geography and history. And Glenn Williams was another teacher who spent his career, many years, in the Auburn High School Art Department before retiring in 1999. If we could please have just a quick moment of silence out of respect for our teachers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right. And thank you for that. Thank you, Mrs. Holloway, for giving us the heads up. Certainly dedicated teachers that they were. So, all right, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. And as began our tradition last school year, we begin our school committee meetings with a spotlight on our students. So this evening, we're happy to welcome some students from Bryn Mawr Elementary School, along with their art teacher, Jenna Bailey, and their principal, Ms. Beverly, to share their experience regarding International Dot Day. And I'm not going to say anything more. I'm going to let them all do the talking. If you need the mic, you should be by the microphone if you need it.
So today, we are here to showcase some of our dots, but in the Town of Auburn, both the Packagogh students and the Bryn Mawr students, we created almost 600 individual dots.
Wow.
International Dot Day is based off of the Peter H. Reynolds book, The Dot, and we celebrated this on September 15th, which is the anniversary of the publication of the bestselling artist and illustrator Peter H. Reynolds book, The Dot, which is all about creativity, courage, and collaboration. And I don't think we could have started the year with more perfect themes, celebrating their bravery, their self-expression, and their individuality, and trusting the art-making process. And if everybody gets a dot, everybody's going to see this dot differently. And my older students will know that we're going to start diving into the elements of art. And there are seven of those, but a line is a dot that went on a.
Wow.
Good job. So everything starts with a dot. And we are here to show you what we've learned and what we were kind of excited about. The book is about a little student named Vashti, who, Emmanuel, what happened to Vashti in the beginning of the book? How did she feel when she had that empty piece of paper?
She felt nervous.
She was nervous. When you start something new, how do you feel, Maggie, when you start something new?
Um, a little happy.
You can feel happy. Sometimes you feel all these emotions, you don't know what to do. But you're going to make your mark and see where it takes.
You.
Perfect. You're going to make your mark and see where it takes you. And then Vashti went to make more dots and more dots, and then she ended up making a dot without making a dot, and she shows a negative space. And we saw how we could really relate to Vashti. But at the end, Vashti, her teacher hung up her first dot. She was kind of being a little fresh, right? What did she do with her marker? She gave it a good jab on the paper and just made that mark, right? But B, what did, what did her teacher do to that first dot? What did she do?
He hung it up.
She hung it up and framed it, right? And then how, how did she feel, or why do you think her teacher hung up her first dot?
To make her feel more encouraged to do art.
And to do art and to kind of just see where it takes you, right, friends?
Yes.
And when she kept going and going, did her dot stay the same, or what happened to them, Emmanuel? What happened? Did her dots, were they all just the same dot?
No.
Well, what do they look like?
They looked different.
Were they big? Were they little?
There were like big and little.
Yeah, and they were different colors?
Yeah.
And then Morgan and Evelyn, remember the little boy at the end of the story, how he said, oh, I wish I could draw, and she said, I think you can, right? What did she do for that little boy? What did she do to that little boy? Did she make him feel proud too?
Yeah.
And have you guys had someone encourage you to start something new?
Mm-hmm.
Are we going to try a lot? These are our two kindergartners, so we're really excited to start some new things this year because Mrs. Bailey can be a little kooky.
And I'm a first grader.
Yeah, first grader. We like to get a little messy in our class.
Why not?
Why not? Why not? So I know we're having technical difficulties, but our friends, we had so many things. Mrs. Bailey, we have this big mural here. Hey, you've seen that. I'm going to stand next to Alonso for one second. So these are some of our students next to the 300 dots, or almost 300. And then we decided to take our dots outside.
That's lily.
Because it was so nice outside. Last week, we put a lot of our dots. You did?
Yeah.
And then what did we do here, friends? Who was in this one? I think some of our friends were in this one. We made a dot with things we found outside.
Yeah.
Right? What else did we do?
Jerry. Oh, that's Jerry.
You sprayed it with water. You sprayed it with water, and you made, everyone made a different dot, right?
Yeah.
So we had a lot of fun over at Bryn Mawr. And I really want to thank the teachers too that made this so special, and they incorporated International Dot Day in their curriculum. And the students that didn't get to wear dots, they were able to wear headbands, so we really had a wonderful sense of community. And it was really fun, right? What was your, what was your favorite part of Dot Day, Maggie?
Um, drawing the picture of on the dot.
On the dot. Because everybody's the same, or was it different?
Different.
Completely different. And B, what was your, how did you feel when you were making your dot?
Happy.
Happy. Were you nervous at first, kind of like Vashti, being like, what am I going to do with this top? But then you were proud at the end?
Yeah.
Yeah. Morgan, did you feel proud of your dot? And Evelyn, can you hold your dot because it's off the thing? Can you show, what did you turn your dot into tonight?
I don't.
I don't.
Nice.
And I love Sonic the Hedgehog.
And we have Sonic the Hedgehog. So everybody was able to express themselves and had a lot of fun, right?
Excellent. Wow. Excellent.
All right. Well, thank you so much for having us.
Thank you for coming. Wow.
So friends, do we have something that we want to share with them?
That's my other one.
We do have something to share with them. Guys, what are you going to tell them? Make your mark and see where it takes you.
Thank you.
And you guys can all fill in your dots, and we can hang them on our wall at Bryn Mawr.
Hey, that's awesome. Thank you so much. I love your dots on your shirt.
And it has a certificate at the top to show that you have been involved in International Dot Day.
Oh, I got one right here. Mr. Keller.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, buddy. Good job. Thanks. Awesome. Goodness. We don't ever get gifts on this evening. This is exciting.
I love crayons.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. That's great. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. What a great idea. Very nice job. Thank you.
Oh, my word. That was amazing.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Can you guys say thank you to everybody?
Yeah, can you guys come on up and shake our hands before you go?
Maybe.
Come on. You guys did such a great job presenting. It's so brave.
I'm going to make your mark again.
Yes.
Shake your hands.
Thank you so much for coming. Good job, buddy. Good job. Nice job. Thank you. Good job. Thank you.
Good job. Nice job. Nice job. See you later.
Later. In a while, pocket dogs. Thank you. Good job. Great job.
Great idea. That was great. Thank you.
You're wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you. Awesome. Good night.
That was horrible.
I don't know how we move on to unfinished business after that. It's such a drag.
That was great. You should take a five-minute break.
Yeah, I know. Break it down. A little mindful, totally.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, that was awesome. Thank you, Dr. Chamberlain.
Yeah. Great stuff. So nice to see kids. Changes everything. It really is. And that art teacher is wonderful.
She is amazing.
Does she, sorry, to the chair, does she do both PACM?
She does.
Bryn Mawr?
Yes, she does. And they do very comparable things, so maybe later in the year, she'll come with something from Packagogh.
I hope so.
Yeah. Perfect.
Very nice.
That'd be great. Yep.
All right, on we go. Moving on to unfinished business.
So this is a real downer for the topic of conversation, so as I am Debbie Downer sometimes, not meaning to be, but so just to go back to school safety, which again has to, much like we have to keep our eyes on our kids and know that that's why we're here, we have to keep school safety at the forefront of the work that we do. So this past week, Mr. Fahy and I and the rest of the district safety team, which includes police and fire, met to discuss the protocols for the October 7th active shooter drill. We want to make sure that the experience is meaningful, but we want everyone to feel safe, calm, and secure, to not be frightened, which it can be frightening. All of this will be shared with our staff well, well before the actual day of the drill so that everyone knows what to expect and that there won't be any surprises. So it really is just to give everyone kind of a baseline experience for what's going to happen that day. We're also going to be working on protocols to do modified drill with the middle school and high school students as well. We don't typically do these drills with students at Swanson Road and younger because it's just, it can be traumatic. It can be very scary. So we talk to them in different ways about being good listeners and following the direction of their teacher and that kind of thing. So more to come on that, but we've been collaborating with the police department on how that day will go, and we're very excited about it. It's something that, while not anything we want to do, it's something that we need to do, and I think will make everyone feel better in the long run.
Okay. All right. Well, good to know. And I assume districts all around us are all doing the same thing.
Variations of it, right? Everyone takes a little bit of a different approach, but yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions or comments?
I just look forward to hearing how it all went. I really do.
All right. We'll move on to the next greatest thing, COVID.
This is bad. I have to think how I leave these out. So as I've said before, we continue to have COVID in our schools. Nurses are tracking cases, and wherever there are three or more cases in any classroom or group, we are notifying families of such so that they can monitor their child's symptoms. We did have a bit of a trend last week in Bryn Mawr School, but seemingly they have quickly fallen back in line with other schools. Folks are back in school and doing well. We continue with cleanings, washing hands, sanitizer, getting used to that new normal. And again, as always, thank you to our nursing team for everything they do around all this because they continue to be busy. But they are doing the in-school testing of symptomatic staff and students to keep everybody as up to date and know who, who needs to go and who can stay. But so far, you know, we haven't had to have any closures of anything. We did, you know, there could be a time where we come across that we have to close a classroom based on the number of cases in a classroom, but we're going to be very judicious about when that happens. And again, we have a very good monitoring system in place to make sure that we know where the hot spots, as they might be called, are located. And we communicate all the time around that. So hopefully, we won't get to that point. We hope.
So yesterday, the email from you was 49. Can you just explain to the rest of the board how that kind of ebbs and flows?
Yeah, so interesting. So Mondays are very big days, right? Because people are home, they're out and about on the weekends. And then each day, today, we only reported six cases. So that's from two very high days. Monday was very high. Tuesday was busy, but a lot less today. And that seems to be the pattern. We see a spike on a Monday, and then it, it tapers off during the course of the week. So certainly, we'll watch that. If that changes, I continue to be in close contact with the Auburn Board of Health. I've been in touch with the Department of Education. We're trying to stay as current as we can with what we should be doing to keep kids safe, and we'll continue to do so. I have started only notifying families on Tuesday and Friday. Last year, I did get a lot of feedback from folks about my daily emails. Some really liked, some not so much. So trying to find a middle ground, I will say after the report yesterday, I thought I might hear some from some folks who might have been concerned, but I didn't hear from folks. So I'm trying to gauge that from what I'm getting back from the community. I want the communications I give to be what everybody wants, or most people want it to be. So, so far, so good, but I'm open to, to hearing from folks if people want it differently too, so.
Through the chair, who, I've heard from a few parents, like, who will they expect to get an email from if there are three cases or more in their child's classroom?
It'll either be the school nurse or the building administrator. Because they're working closely, you know, the school nurses are making sure they're notifying the building principal. If that becomes an issue and then that gets in the sheet, then I get notified. And just the other day, a nurse emailed me, she's like, yeah, I'm sending out the notice today. The, the principal had a couple of meetings, and she wanted to get it out quickly. So she sent it out. They have classroom groups set up that we can access to easily get in touch with a whole classroom.
Through the chair, can I ask, how is our sub list? Because if we have teachers out, if we have numerous teachers, we have enough.
Yeah, no. No, no, we don't have enough, but we continue, maybe, Mr. Keller, you can tell them a little bit about what you've been doing around trying to get subs into the buildings.
Yeah, so it's definitely a need, and, and we continue to address it. So I've been interviewing, as subs are by our positions, and we've kept that as an open position. I think I just got another one today. So I've been interviewing them on Zoom, and then I meet with them in a group. And I just had a meeting on Monday with five people interested in being subs in our schools. And Kelly, my administrative assistant, has been meeting with them and putting together packets and collecting their paperwork. So since the beginning of the year, we've added eight subs, which is still not enough, and we're looking to constantly add. Those are people, in addition to our regular subs that we've had in the district prior to them, but we're constantly looking to keep adding to that.
We did with a grant at the beginning of COVID fund, some building subs, so that each building has somebody that's kind of that sub for the day. It's still not enough, but we're working very hard to get people in, and slowly, incrementally, we're increasing our list. So I think, you know, through the fall, I think we're going to be in better shape. Good.
All right. Great. All right, moving on to busing.
So busing has gone remarkably well, and, and we're pleased so far with how things are going. Mandy Williams, Caitlin O'Neil, and Kelly Ackley in our office did a tremendous job creating a list and distributing passes and all of that. As of September 15th, we had 41 students on a waitlist, which was a lot. But we were waiting to get accurate counts of who was actually riding the bus, not just who we had on the bus lists, because we were hearing that we had buses with nine students on them, particularly at the high school. But we had kids on a waiting list that wanted to ride the bus. So once we got the solid counts, we felt confident in collaboration with AA Transportation that we could accommodate all of the kids on the waitlist. So as of today, well, actually, as of September 16th, we had zero. So they were all assigned, got their passes, and so far, everyone is, so far, so good. They're continuing to take the counts. We're not seeing any crazy numbers of kids on buses, so, so far, so good. There is a little concern about when musical instruments arrive, not so much the flute, but the baritone ones and those kind of things.
So I'm boarding a bus today.
Yeah, so we're going to continue to monitor it and see what we need to do to accommodate that, but that's like having another whole person.
Yeah.
Yeah, through the chair, my daughter picked the drum set.
Yes.
And loud. It's fine.
You have to bring that back and forth. It goes.
Oh, I don't have. She does.
Oh, my gosh.
It took a while to get that off the bus today.
Through the chair, it's like a rolling suitcase. I was like, what is this? She moving in? So that is something we are going to have to figure out. Oh, man.
Push for the flute. Push for the flute. Do you do harmonica? Because I'm.
Oh, that's funny. All right. Consolidated Human Resource Review.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So last year, we began a collaboration with the Town of Auburn related to human resources across the town. And the town, using the grant, was able to facilitate a study on the human resource role in the town by using the Edward J. Collins Center for Public Management at UMass Boston. This study required them to gather a lot of information. They did a lot of interviews across the town and across the district. This information was shared last year, and on September 12th of 2022, the final report, which is in your packet, was shared with the town's select board. It's recommending that the assistant town manager to be hired in January upon the retirement of Julie Jacobson and the assumption of Ed Kasenovitch as town manager, that this new person that they hired has experience and certification in human resource management and all, you know, the necessary certifications. And then beyond that, they would hire a human resource generalist to kind of do the meat and potatoes work of human resources related to benefits, job postings, contracts, interviewing. All of those things would be coordinated through this person, so it would be a shared role. Seemingly, from what the report outlines, this would make us much more efficient, as it would the town as well, by really formalizing this. And I think I've mentioned before, you know, I don't have a background in human resources. That's not what I went to school for. And even a school business manager didn't go to school for human resources, and things are becoming increasingly complex. And we along, and, and the town is, is in the same position, right? They need an elevated level of expertise to manage the day-to-day things that can crop up with personnel and all of those things. And so we're very excited that seemingly this will move forward once January rolls around, and I think it's going to have nothing but a positive impact on the school department and all of the personnel in the school department. So we're excited about it.
Yeah, I watched the, the meeting and saw that, and yeah, I was sold. I was texting you, I'm sold. This is like going to be a godsend, because none of us have HR experience either, so.
And it's so complicated.
It is. There's a lot of fine print and loopholes and everything else that I just, yeah. So that's exciting. Now, it's a grant, you said, so do we know, like, when that grant runs out and what's the plan after that, or is this just?
Yeah, so there, the town is really looking at the reorganization of jobs that's going to be able to kind of fit this position in there. So it should not be a big addition to what we're looking at as far as funding for personnel.
Okay. All right.
So all the details on that haven't been worked out yet. The grant was really just about the study.
Okay. Gotcha.
But seemingly hiring a new person on for the assistant town manager, and then some reorganization, we're going to be in very good shape with how that, how that plays out.
Okay. And collective bargaining, that will still go through?
That'll still be, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Those were my questions. Anyone else have any questions? No?
Nope.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to the strategic plan update.
Just a little plug for my own evenings that will be coming up. As we discussed the last time, I will be having two superintendent listening sessions to be scheduled with families to talk about our strategic plan and moving forward. One will be held at Auburn Middle School on Monday, October third at six thirty. I do have a survey out. I think I have fifteen folks signed up, which I will tell you, I was happy to be in double digits, so that was exciting. So that will be for Auburn High School and middle school families. And then it will be at Packard Hogg School for all the elementary and the preschool families on Tuesday, October eleventh at six thirty PM. And so all of that that comes out of that will be shared widely with the community as well with the board. And so I'm excited, actually, to kind of be with some families and hear what they have to say, share some of the work that was done. I think it'll bring us to another level as we look forward to really bring to the community what our kids need. So be great.
I think it's awesome, and the more hands on deck, the better.
That's exactly right.
So, great. All right, anything from committee? No questions, comments? All right.
I will say one more thing, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I do say in your packet, you'll have the survey questions that I'll be asking of the students. You do not have those questions in your packet, but you will once we have, I don't have them complete.
Okay.
I got two schools done, I couldn't get the third one done. So I said, well, we're gonna just wait, and I'll have it the next time. So I apologize for that.
All right. And will these sessions be recorded and replayed, or just keeping minutes, basically?
Yeah, keeping minutes. I really hadn't planned on recording them. I guess I could try and do that if there was interest. I just really hadn't thought that through. I was really looking for just like that, I really want a conversation.
Yeah.
You know, which gets a little tricky, but we can see about that.
Okay, just curious. All right, move on to the Green Dome update.
This is good news. Mr. Fahy and I met with three representatives of the committee on September thirteenth. They had come before you late last year to, they are trying to refurbish the Green Dome that was atop the old Auburn High School that now sits in the outfield of the baseball field at Auburn High School. And it's a little shabby, so they've been fundraising and trying to get ways to have it updated. So they have finally found a Murphy's Home Repair, who is a local company, who has agreed with a reasonable price to them to remove the lead paint and repair the Green Dome. They should be starting in mid-October. It should take about seven to ten days. The gentleman is lead removal certified. The whole thing will be tented. All the protocols that need to be followed will be followed. They've been before the conservation committee already and have gotten approval through there. So it's really exciting that it'll finally happen. They're very happy it's going to happen, and I think it's going to look great once it's kind of parked up a little bit, so.
Definitely, yeah. And I remember them presenting, and they were, they're a great group of people, very passionate about Auburn history, so.
I think they said nearly all of them are from the class of sixty-six, if I'm correct. Yeah. So they're excited. And we'll be sharing some information with the high school, too, so maybe some of the students can show an interest in their, in the old school and how things were done. So they're gonna be getting me some information about that, too.
Great, awesome. Okay, moving on to new business.
So the Auburn High School graduation date. Mr. DeLong Champ and the leadership at Auburn High School is asking the committee to change the two thousand and twenty-three graduation date from June ninth to June second, again at seven PM on Memorial Field. Being done to create a little bit of a less hectic finish with rehearsals that have to happen, other events that happen in the high school. They're really looking to spread the senior year across the senior year. So they just recently had a field trip that the board approved, that they went to begin some kind of team building and wrapping things up for the year. And they feel like this is going to fit more in line with when classes finish and when they're done with those things, and it'll just be a better finish all the way around. So I look to your, this fits in with the DESI requirements. They still get in their appropriate days in school, so it doesn't impact that at all.
All right, I'm sure our seniors won't be disappointed either.
They did have a bit of a lengthy time out last year, that was the other thing, before graduation actually took place. So I think they're just looking to tighten all that up.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the date change for Auburn High School graduation from June ninth, two thousand and twenty-three to June second, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second. Okay, any discussion?
Um, just through the chair, when is the last day of school for seniors? Do you know?
Oh, if they're talking ahead.
By July twenty-fourth, May twenty-sixth.
Oh, so you saw that coming, right? You saw that question, you're like, good.
So, yeah, okay, so that makes sense, yeah. Because last, I mean, it's like, if you keep the original date, it's like three weeks.
It is.
As opposed to like a week and a half.
Yeah, and I think that's what happened last year. There was a long gap in between when they finished and when graduation actually happened.
Yeah, that makes sense. Makes sense. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's a vote. Okay, on to the Auburn High School field trip to Quebec.
So in your packet, you'll find a request from Elizabeth DuMay at Auburn High School to take up to fifty Auburn High School students to Quebec City, Quebec, Canada. This is a trip that took place for many years prior to COVID nineteen. And the goal of this trip is to immerse students in French Canadian culture. And there are more details in your packet. Oh, yeah, Mr. DuMay here. She'd like to speak for a moment about what the plan is for the trip.
Yes, and I figured I'd just give you a little more information, too, as I've received it from the, from the travel agency. My name's Libby DuMay. I've been in the district for, this is my seventeenth year, teaching French at the high school. My friend and colleague Nicole Vecchio is over here as well. She's on year, I think, fifteen for moral support, but also on the organization, and she's been really helpful for me. Besides what you have in your packet, there are a few things I wanted to just bring to your attention. I know you have the itinerary there, and on the last page, um, actually, the itinerary you have throughout it, it does mention what is included in the price for the students and what is not. Your packet information says that the trip would be nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars per student. If I take fifty to fill a bus, it would be eight hundred and eighteen per student. So that significantly decreases. I wanted to share some numbers with you guys. I believe I also included in your packet that there were a hundred and twenty-three in attendance at the interest meeting. I just had a preliminary meeting to see if it was even worth the time and effort to organize all of this. Obviously, the interest is there. I went ahead and created a Schoology group page so that parents were a little bit more informed, and it didn't rely just on their teenagers bringing home all the information. Shared with them that I was coming in front of you this evening. They had to fill out an additional Google Form interest survey. I said it was required for them to get on the list. So I currently have in hand seventy-nine students who have filled out the interest survey, that extra step further. You know, if you're gonna put the five minutes in for me, then you're probably, probably pretty interested. Which at this point, if everybody signed up, which is wishful thinking, would leave a waitlist still of twenty-nine students, even some seniors that may not have gone on it historically, or may not, wouldn't go on it if everybody did sign up. Historically, we've always done the waitlist in the same way. I'm happy, I'm open if that's something that you want us to change. But what I start with is seniors down to freshmen level of French, and then seniors down to freshmen who are non-French takers. It is obviously geared toward those who take the language so that they can practice, but we do want to open it up for equity reasons to the entire rest of the school. So that's what I have in hand right now. And like I mentioned, there would be a waitlist of twenty-nine if everybody really, really, truly did sign up and want to come. I mentioned the price. I wanted to also comment on a couple of quick things that weren't in your original packet on what that might include. I know as a parent myself, it's the, bless you, thank you. It's some of the safety concerns that I would have if my teenagers decide to go on an international trip without me. There's a tour leader included in the price of the trip. Obviously, all of the itinerary items mentioned. There is a, there are bracelets provided with an emergency toll-free line that will link to me and to the tour leader as well. There's private security to monitor the hallways at night in the hotel room, which I think is key. And there is liability included for protections of the chaperones, as well as access to George Washington University doctors who are on call twenty-four seven. Of course, I would, I would collect all of the medical information from whatever students were attending. If we needed a nurse to be on the chaperone list, I would, you know, organize for all of that to happen. But from the parent perspective, just to ease your minds a little bit, I have that information in front of me here, but it wasn't in the packet yet. Any other questions? I'm happy to answer. Beth, I know you asked me one last week, actually, via email. And it was about the fundraising. And so I put that in the interest survey to the students that they were required to fill out. Level of French, what grade they're in, name, basic stuff, and if their families would be interested in there being fundraising opportunities presented to ease the cost of the trip. There's thirty-nine of the seventy-nine that said yes. So that's something where Ms. Nicola is helping me to kind of organize ideas. And if we move forward, we will, we will figure out a way to help those students that need the financial assistance to attend.
Thank you. That's great. I looked through the itinerary. I read it to my daughter, and she, I was telling Dr. Chamberlain that she now wants to expedite into high school so she can go on this trip. It sounds pretty amazing. I'm gonna have to use the itinerary and create like a family trip out of it or something. By all means. Looks fun. My only other thing, do the kids know they need passports to get back in?
I mentioned it very quickly at the interest meeting, but in a cafeteria full of a hundred and twenty-three kids, that would be the first topic on my next post. We would conduct a family meeting, I think over Zoom, so that anybody and everybody could attend, hopefully, depending on their own schedules. That actually is conducted not just by me, it's organized by Jump Street, the tour company. So they're there for questions. We would cover passports. And as of right now, the Canada regulation, which I did share with them at that interest meeting, too, is that you still have to be fully vaccinated in order to cross the border. So that was hard because it was not coming from me, but from the government.
Yeah.
That protocol is set to expire September thirtieth, so.
I just heard that today on the news.
Yeah, I, I have no idea if they're going to reinstate it, looking at numbers. I don't know, but I would certainly keep everybody informed. And I may even, you know, if approval went through, I may even put the sign up for that initial down payment after September thirtieth, so that if there's any students that, you know, weren't able to go, that got, I don't know, reinstated on the option list, I want it available to them, too.
Okay, all right, yeah. And just the passport thing, there is like a fee to get a passport. And so as long as these students know, you know, they're gonna have to cover, I assume they would have to cover that cost as well?
They would need to, yeah.
Through the chair, just, it does take, we just got past, like, we knew it ours. It takes eight to twelve weeks.
Yes.
So that might be something that you start sooner, because I'm seeing it's coming up in January.
Yeah.
We're coming on October, so it might be something that you mention to all these kiddos.
Yes.
And it is different if you are under, I believe, the age of sixteen, both parents, both parents need to be present.
Have to be present.
At the post office, and, or you have to have a legal document saying that, like, one parent is legally fully responsible. So it is not an easy end. The only post office in the area that does it is Oxford.
I did mention to some students today that were already kind of concerned about the timeline. And I said, you know, I'll keep you updated on the meeting, but if your parents are AAA members, you can get everything done in-house in a AAA office as well.
You just can't, you have to bring it to the post office.
You do.
Yeah, because I'm a AAA member, and I got my daughter's passports. And you have, you can get the picture, you can get the document. But you have to then make an appointment at the Oxford Post Office. And you have to do it online, because there's only like one person or two people that can do it.
Okay.
Very limited timeframes.
Okay.
So it is, it, I mean, it took me about four days to get it together, so. But yeah, if you are a AAA member, you get a free photo and things like that, but.
And maybe providing them a list of post offices that are available to make appointments.
And I know that Auburn does not do it. Oxford does, I'm not sure where else, because.
I know there's a couple in Wester, Millbury and West Boylston, which is a drive for them, but that's where I live.
You know, like I said earlier in the meeting, we don't know where and how COVID is gonna play out here, but there should probably be a plan for that, too.
Yes.
Yeah, like some kind of insurance. Yeah, and I think maybe, you know, maybe some of our nurses or our nurse leader could help with that. I'm sure Ms. McCrillis, to talk through that, would be happy to do that with what kind of makes sense. A little early for that, because we don't know how things are gonna go. But I think that's gonna, could be another issue with that, so to think about.
Through the chair, I had two questions, if you don't mind. On a trip this size, how many chaperones?
So if we're at the thirty-five mark, that is enough to run the trip. That would be four chaperones. The second we reach over forty, there would be five paid chaperones.
And this may be a silly question, as I was looking at the dates with it being January, and, you know, it is winter. Is there anything regarding weather? Like if something, say, on the twenty-sixth, we had a massive snowstorm, I hope that.
So it's, we have driven through massive snowstorms before. I'm sure that a certain size would delay or something. I, I do not honestly know. That's a great question. I give them a very extensive packing list because it's very difficult for them to understand that it really is negative ten some days up there. And we're going dog sledding and tubing, even if it is negative ten. So I guess it's a good thing to mention, I can ask the tour company what they do in case of a major storm.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be important.
What I was thinking about with COVID, too, I know at one point, I'm not sure right now, but COVID swabs were required to come back into the country. And I have heard of some people getting stuck, like in Canada, for the period of time for that quarantine. So just something to, in case they start that again.
Yes, I will also run that by the tour company. That's pretty important to know what protocol is there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But now that you're gonna have nightmares all night.
We think it's a great trip. Whatever I can do to help, I just don't speak French.
No, but it's very important for me to consider all of these things, so I appreciate your questions.
I'm sure when you took the trip prior, COVID was not an issue, so it's just.
Our last trip was January two thousand and twenty, and if we knew that that would be our last trip. I was mentioning to Alan and Beth, like, it was just, it was incredible anyway. It was so fantastic. That was the year that they filmed several Homer Christmas movies, if anybody else is a big fan.
Oh, those were.
At the Ice Hotel that we toured. So the kids are like sliding down the slide into the lobby of the hotel, and they're like, I saw this in a movie. It was magical. And we had no idea that was the last time for a while.
So glad those kids got to go.
Yes.
Great, yeah, that's great.
And some of them, two of them are now seniors. They were freshmen on that trip. So they did stand up and talk to the kids and say, like, it's really fun.
Yeah, I think it's great that the kids can get back out there and start doing these things again, so I definitely am.
Madam Chair, I have one more thing. And maybe Libby with the tour company to ask them, let's say, Canada closes in December. Like, is there an insurance or something related to protecting these kids if the trip is like totally? You know, I don't wanna think that, but I guess I'm on a Debbie Downer trip tonight. I don't know. I'm usually very positive, but just something to think about, because we wouldn't want everybody to lose their money, you know.
Right, there is some solid paperwork on the trip insurance. I just haven't looked that deeply into every aspect just yet, but that is an important aspect.
I can say, Madam Chair, if I may, so having been a middle school principal, I did several trips and used several different travel companies. I had an opportunity to talk to Elizabeth about Jump Street, and we used them, and they're outstanding. So I think it's a, it's a great choice. And there was, and things that may have changed since I was doing that, but I do know that parents have the opportunity of purchasing travel insurance and that, for those kinds of things. But I think you're in great hands, and so I, they were top-notch, their travel, their tour leaders on the trip and their organization, so.
And this was their, this was their starting off point, was the Quebec trip. They've been offering it longer than, than any of the other options.
That's great.
Awesome.
I think it's awesome.
Yeah, very exciting. Oh, I thought you raised your hand, Mandy. I'm like, oh, you have something to say. You better be careful scratching your head over there. I'll call you right out. All right, so can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Auburn High School field trip to Quebec on January twenty-sixth to the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second. Okay, we discussed at nauseam. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote, and I already signed it off, so you're good to go. Thank you all, very, very good. Good luck. I'm praying for no snow and no COVID problems. Through the chair, can I just say one more thing?
When the trip is complete, is there a chance you could come back and tell us about it? I would love to hear about it.
Oh, yeah.
With some photos.
Yeah, I would love that.
Yes, yes, you should. We would like a photo slideshow as well. Especially in the, the Ice Hotel. Yes. Yes, yes.
That's great. Have a good time. Thank you.
Yeah. You are free to stay or you are free to go?
Yeah. I would go.
You have a long ride. Thank you, thanks for coming.
Bye, have a great night. All right, moving on to the reserve at Ashworth Hill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I am sharing with you some information related to the reserve at Ashworth Hill. This is a housing development proposed by Eastland Partners to construct three hundred and twenty-four units of housing off Blaker Street. The select board voted to support this initiative on October twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen. The pandemic and supply chain issues delayed the project, and they have now come forward with an updated timeline for completion. At the time of this proposal, it was estimated that the public schools could potentially be impacted by the enrollment of sixty-seven school-aged children. So along with, you will see a timeline from Eastland Partners that's a somewhat color-coded. There's a letter from Julie Jacobson, town manager, related to when this was all approved, that we can talk about if, if needed. There's also a, a single page that talks about the phase, the three phases of building, starting in February of two thousand and thirty and going through January of two thousand and twenty-four. There is some wondering about supply chain issues that continue to exist that could potentially impact this, but this is what they're proposing at this time. And also in your packet, you have the full PowerPoint presentation that was given some time ago, which talks about the number of school-aged children that may be impacted, the impact on the sewer and the roads, and the many things that are impacted by that many units coming into the town. And the final document that I included, I think it's at the very back of your packet, is simply a historical enrollment page that shows, because this will impact us, right? So there's, without a doubt, putting in three hundred and twenty-four units will impact the public schools. The problem is, is really knowing how that's going to happen and where it's going to happen, right? We don't know if, we don't know if people will move in there with kindergartners or with high school seniors. From what Administrator Jacobson has shared with me, she said that when they do these studies, they look at that. And that most times, when folks are renting a place like that, they're not necessarily moving in with older children, but they may start with younger kids that can impact kind of those younger grades. And then they either find something bigger in the community, or they move on. Now, that is all obviously anecdotal information, and, you know, it's a, it's a best guess situation. But I did want to just do an overall summary, looking at as far back as I could go in power school, going back to the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year. And then for each grade, you'll see typically, what is our average, our average number of students in each grade level? So, you know, if you just look at this broadly, Bryn Mawr and Packard Hogg, we've always run where we look at an overall class size of about a hundred students. We usually have four teachers. Sometimes we've gone to five, when we've gotten to a little bit over a hundred. So at this point, right, seemingly, Packard Hogg may have some space, it might look like, for, for some students. Swanson Road and Auburn Middle School are very full. They're very full. Swanson Road could potentially, if there were rooms, right, we could hire a teacher and maybe, but the problem is, we don't have any rooms. And Auburn Middle School, this, I was not involved in this at the time, but when it was built, and this was all that Massachusetts Building Committee would allow us to do, was enough for five hundred and eighty students. And so we're already well over six hundred and have been for some time. That's not new. We have been running at six hundred or a little bit more, so middle school is very tight. Auburn High School, I don't have an actual capacity going that far back, but a high school is a little bit different. Doesn't mean we wouldn't have to hire staff, but you can, you know, you can add electives. And if you add an algebra teacher, you now get four or five sections of algebra, right? There's a little bit, you can be a little bit more flexible. Class sizes can be a little bit bigger in some areas, and you can still be, you know, provide an excellent education. So, you know, I don't know, I don't have. So, you know, I don't know, I don't have all the information. I don't have a crystal ball either with where this project will go. But I thought it was worthwhile with sharing this information with you, giving some time to digest it and to think about it and to begin to think through um how we may proceed. Um, also in here in one of the forums, back when this proposal had been made, they had, usually when a company comes in like this, they offer a certain amount of money or they look for things from that that the community may need kind of as an offset to now having all these additional people. And at that time, uh, Dr. Mary Ellen Brunel was superintendent and at that time she did talk about definitely an increase in staff in certain areas, right, depending on what our enrollment was at the time and and how that played out, so. I I think some of this, we're going to maybe a little bit of a wait and see, um, but I do think that it's worthwhile having some conversations about options we may have to mitigate the influx of these students without knowing where they might arrive, right? That's the tricky part, so. I open it up to any questions. Uh, hopefully I can answer them for you. It's a very um moving target.
Yeah, my question is, can we say no thank you? And I don't think that's possible.
No, we can't say no thank you.
No, um, you know, we always welcome new students and everything, but this could potentially put a huge strain on all people that are already very strained, so I'm concerned, but um especially the middle school, if it's that full already. And their number of sixty-seven seems very conservative to me. I think um Dr. Brunel's number of a hundred is probably more accurate and I think we need to push back on these guys and they need to talk to you because now we're post-COVID, we have new needs, there are more kids that are here and we what we need might be different than what we needed back then. So is that possible?
Um, so I I will speak with Julie Jacobson about that. A lot of that was done quite a bit ago and I don't know if there's a lot of room for changing that. There's a lot of concern in the town with what they're providing around the roads and what this is going to do to the roads. And you know that that can eat up a lot of money very, very quickly. Um, but I have shared um with with Julie and with Ed that, you know, there's there's concern. They they have this enrollment as well and they're well aware that this is gonna impact the town in lots of ways, so. I I do think we need to give it some good hard thinking, go through the material again, see what um, see what the coming year brings, see where we end up with enrollment with this year. Our enrollment this year is still fairly what I would call preliminary. We're still early in the school year. We may end up higher, we may end up a little bit lower in places, um, but we are going to have to think through some space issues.
And is modulars, is that like out of the question for the middle school or is that something we could potentially look at down the road?
Maybe down the road and I I actually, in thinking through our strategic plan, I think there's room in the community that we may need to begin to talk about just uh the structural needs, right, the facility needs in the district, which was never really part of the strategic plan. That wasn't, that never came to be because I think at the time we had recently got an Auburn High School and then the middle school followed that, so everybody was like, we're fine. Because we had these great new buildings. Um, and then things change pretty quickly, so I think there may be room for a committee down the road to begin to pull some folks together and say, because even when I look at this, I'm like, but but I still don't really know what we need because I don't know what's coming. Right? So that's gonna be the part, the kind of walking the tightrope on this is to kind of figure that out and and I think the more people that we talk to and talk with and bring together, I think the better off we'll be looking forward. Um, you know, I I I, there are a lot of options, you know.
Yeah, through the chair, I look at Bryn Mawr and I think those kids don't get to leave their classroom for art, you know, arts on a cart. Um, music, I'm not sure. I think it's in the gym, but I just think about those things that don't seem like big things, but having a kindergarten in a classroom all day and not being able to move to go somewhere. I just would hate to see that happen over, so I do think uh the dreaded new school someday word might have to come up if these numbers keep going up. Um, which I I don't know if that would ever happen. My dad was on school committee in the eighties to get the new Auburn High School and uh it opened in um two thousand and six, so. I I don't know, but um now that we gotta think about the kids, I I see um Goddard Park Improvement, Summer Concert Series, Independence Day Events, are those fundings that that the um Tinker Hill is gonna pay for? Like, is that something that, you know, maybe instead of Summer Concert Series, I love it? Can it come over and support our schools a little bit?
Yes.
Um, Independence Day events, great, love it, go every year. Can we maybe take that money towards the schools instead of Summer Concert Series? I will sing for free. It will not get anybody, but.
And and those are things to, for debate. I think the bigger concern is around the roadwork that they're, that they're looking.
Yeah.
Um, the roadwork, that's a big part of this. That's what they keep coming back to. You know, they have here three hundred thousand dollars. Well, this was in twenty eighteen.
Right.
It's not three hundred thousand dollars anymore.
It is now.
Yeah, it's a lot after COVID.
You know, so it may be, you know, that's gonna, that could take a big part of that. Just that. And those are things that kind of have to be done almost in the town. Not that we don't have to, we do too. We're gonna need some help. So we're gonna have to think some, think pretty creatively, I think, moving forward.
Any idea, I'm sorry, through the chair, any idea of how many times we'll get provided some updates regarding these things? Um, just because I think that the more we can stay ahead of it, I mean, obviously we should have a concern with a lot, the number of these kids entering schools and I mean, we need to make sure that we have the staff and we're protecting them and all these different things and I'd like to stay ahead of it as much as we can.
And I will say, you bring up a good point. So I was at the meeting the other night related to the human resource thing where there was a presentation around the Perry Place Project, which is another project that's um, you know, certainly not anywhere near this as far as approval goes. Uh, but certainly being pursued very heavily by the folks who want to put it into town and there were a number of townspeople at the meeting, a lot of townspeople at the meeting from that area who are very much opposed to it. But, you know, there are a lot of parameters that go around with, you can't just be opposed because you're opposed, right? You can't just say, you you just can't come. There are a lot of reasons that go into all of that, so, you know, that could potentially, from that initial study, be another forty students. That's where we get to about a hundred when you look at both of those together. Um, and that's again, their their estimates are typically low.
Well, they gave one estimate and then shaved off like thirty kids because they're like, you know.
Yeah.
People have point five children or something.
Through the chair, sorry. Um, and based on where Tinker Hill or the reserve at Ashworth Hill would be, it would be Packerchog. So.
It would be Bryn Mawr.
Yeah, it's Bryn Mawr. It's right up here off of Route twenty, Albert Street.
Isn't that by where we are?
Up behind Chili's.
It is, but we're on the other side.
Oh, we're on the other side, okay.
Beep Mawr. So Beep and Mawr, which is already.
Definitely does not happen.
Yeah, right, yeah.
You could be on the ceiling.
Yeah, so I I, you know, I think we have to think creatively about space. I think we have to think strategically about staff. Um, and busing, because busing may have to change, you know, with how we do that. So, lot to think about. Uh, someone did bring up, I know some time ago, we've talked about kind of a reconfiguration of the primaries to see if that would help. We may take another look at that and see if that does anything. Weren't you on that when we moved in preschool? Yeah, we talked about K-one and two, in a two-three.
Oh. The more transition for these poor kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, I I think back and I think uh kindergarten to five
Yeah.
is so much better than what we have already. There's too much transition for these kids.
Yeah, yeah. So a lot of things though that I think we need to chew on and mull on a little bit as we move forward, but um there's a lot of good information if you really look through it carefully and as far as updates go, um, Julie Jacobson and Ed Kazanovich have been amazing. I met with them again this week. I meet with them nearly every other week and they're so open about everything, so I will reach out to her regarding updates and-
Would it be something we could consider having them come and speak here or is that?
Oh, I think they would be happy to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they would be happy to.
The more we know, the better we can prepare.
Yeah, I was gonna say either that or I will collect questions or whatever and I will meet with them. Um, especially this construction schedule, it's every month uh for the next year and a half, starting in September, where we could potentially get pounded with thirty extra people every single month. And um, you know, at some point, can we say like, we, you can't have any, we can't have any more next month? Like, we are at capacity. And what happens then?
Which is also after our class size has already been created for the year, so now we're at twenty-five.
And busing and everything else. It just doesn't.
It's, doesn't seem feasible, but it's it's, uh, uh, I'm not saying it's gonna be easy. This is definitely gonna be a tricky thing to navigate just because there are going to remain many unknowns. Um, but, you know, there there are places we can, we're not completely full. Packerchog has space for some kids and if we looked at some creative busing, if we got hit at that primary level, we could absorb some and they don't all come at once.
Right.
Which is a nice thing. It's not like all of a sudden there are three hundred and twenty units and everybody that's in them is here, right? That would be a, that would be a real nightmare, I think. Um, but I think we'll just have to look at this incrementally and and go from there.
Through the chair, I'm not sure we can say no thank you. You know what I mean, like? But I think that's probably- You know, we're already building, um, you know, we'll have to consider some creative ways of, you know, listening, I mean, we've done it before, we'll do it again.
Great schools and people want to come to Auburn and so, you know, that's why it's very desirable. We have great faculty and lots of support from the community.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sure it will all work out. The silver lining was that path that they're gonna make from the middle school up to, I think that's a great idea.
Everyone can walk.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Uh, and this will, you know, another thing to consider is that this will impact our considerations related to school choice.
Yeah.
Oh, definitely. Well, that's true.
Um, which, uh, you know, our applications go up uh usually October first, right? October first to to the end of March uh for anyone interested and we have had already, I have had probably four or five interested folks reach out to me and I've said, so this is when the application is there, but just know we accepted a limited number of students this past year due to enrollment and I'm not sure what that means for next year, so that's something else we'll have to consider.
That's a great point. Through the chair, do we not allow um school choice in the elementary?
We don't.
Yeah, up to what grade?
We start in sixth grade, so the middle school and high school. We've never had enough room in our middle schools and I mean in our elementary schools to offer that.
That's what I thought, I just need a clarification.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we do supplement our budget a little bit with the school choice monies, so would it break even with this new deal? You know, if we had to say no to school choice and then take on these, I I was trying to figure out their bold, you know, our profits or whatever that the town could see.
Yeah, so that, what they, what they, what in part of that presentation, they talk about is chapter seventy funding, right, which is based on your enrollment. And so what they seem to indicate in their presentation is that the increase in chapter seventy money that we will see will allow us to pay for whatever additional staff we may need, which may or may not be true. I I can't, you know, they they present it in such a way that that because that's what they they want you to see. And I'm not saying that they're not being truthful. I don't mean to say it that way, but um, sometimes it's not that cut and dry as the mathematical numbers show, you know.
Rose-colored glasses.
Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes it's just unchained memories.
All right, well, more to come on that, I'm sure.
Yes, yes.
Okay, we'll move on to teaching and learning report.
Yes, um, so earlier, Dr. Chamberlain uh transitioned us from international dot date to talk about uh the Alex, uh, the active shooter drills on October seventh. So in addition. Um, so in addition to us conducting those drills on that day, we are going to, staff in um all the buildings will be uh participating in uh anti-bias um work, um, that's being led by the Anti-Defamation League, commonly known as ADL. Um, and so we've been working with them, uh, sharing feedback from our equity audit as well as uh goals that are in our strategic plan and the draft that form that that's in in terms of that revision and so um uh each building will be, will be meeting with ADL and this is kind of customized plan that they've developed uh for us on that day. Uh, and the goals of our work with ADL, uh, from a professional development standpoint, from a professional development standpoint are to establish a shared understanding of bias, uh, implicit and explicit bias, uh, the impact it can have on staff, student, families. Uh, to develop slash refine bias incident intervention strategies. Uh, and lastly, identify next steps in uh making sure that we have inclusive and equitable classroom and school communities. This is uh something that we uh look forward to establishing this relationship with ADL in terms of uh staff development, but also student programs and some uh leadership opportunities uh with ADL, who's, has an outstanding reputation in working with schools and communities.
Awesome. Is our strategic plan coming to life? Which is a really wonderful thing.
And it has really been an outcry from staff around wanting this type of work.
That's great.
Yeah, so they are, our staff is ripe for it. Um, you know, it's not always easy work, but it's very important work, so we're excited to to take this first big step.
Yeah, great. psyched. That's awesome. Um, any other questions or comments from the committee? No? All right, we don't have Cecilia here tonight. Is there anything for business and financial?
Not this evening. She will be back at the next meeting and we'll have a full report on the start of the school year.
All right, great. All right, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Good night, everyone.
Night.